Good to go.
Welcome to the special meeting of the Thursday, October 21 Cedric County Board of County Commissioners. We basically moved the regular Wednesday meeting over to today. We were going to cancel Wednesday due to schedule attendance with the Commissioners, but there's a couple items we need to take care of, so we decided to move this meeting to today. So with that, we will call the special meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Howell, Commissioner Cruz, Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
New business. Item A, resolution regulating the discharge of firearms across property boundaries.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor, here to present this item. The resolution that's in front of you was requested by Commissioner Howell would make it a Cedric County Code violation for someone to shoot a firearm and have the bullet leave their property and go on to someone else's property, with a few exceptions on that, one of which is if there be consent from that property owner for that to occur. Second would be lawful defense of oneself or other, or another person. Third exception would be if it's a law enforcement officer discharging their firearm in the line of duty. And then lastly, there's an exception in the resolution for bona fide hunting activities done in compliance with state law where the bullet does not strike or travel in the vicinity of any person, residence, or other structure. This resolution is very similar to one the Johnson County's Board of County Commissioners passed about two months ago. It addresses really the same types of concerns they were facing in their county with a bunch of folks who had concerns about bullets coming into their neighborhoods. Any violation would be subject to a $500 maximum fine. The Cedric County Sheriff's Office would be responsible for administering and enforcing the resolution. Sheriff Easter is here today if you guys have any questions for him or if he wishes to make any comments. The approval of this resolution would be by a simple majority vote. There may also be members from the public who would wish to speak on this item, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions you may have as well.
Okay. Are there any questions so far from the Commission? I don't see any. So at this time, we will take, if there's anybody from the public that would like to address the Commission on this item, you're more than welcome to come up and please state your name and your address. How many people would maybe want to address us? Another couple, two or three? We try to hold the comments to about five minutes, but if there's just three of you, there may be some questions from the Commission back to you, so respectfully, we'll try to keep some kind of order on this. So thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Shannon Puchala, and I live at 3425 Laughlin Street in Derby, Kansas, 67037. My husband asked me to represent him by reading a letter that he actually has sent to Mr. Howell, so this might sound familiar to you, I'm sorry, but it says, "Mr. Howell, thank you for your attention in the matter of county residents shooting in the Northbrook addition in Derby. However, I must urge you to continue pressing the matter. I offer my personal experience of this issue at hand. I'm a resident at the Northbrook addition. I'm a major in the U.S. Air Force and a KC-135 instructor pilot assigned to McConnell Air Force Base. I am currently deployed until December of 2021. I have a firearms safety endorsement from Minnesota since the age of 15. I have sworn to defend the Constitution of the United States. While I recognize that the county residents have a Second Amendment right, my family and I also have an alienable right according to the Declaration of Independence, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. I have personally witnessed the neighbors shooting toward the Northbrook addition in July and early August. I was working out in my garage gym with the garage doors open. Due to my firearm safety and military background, the shooting I heard was either a rapid semi-automatic or fully automatic. The problem is that not the firearms, but the manner in which they utilize their firearms. While I support the Second Amendment rights, they come with an equal level of responsibility. Their shooting is unsafe, irresponsible, and unreasonable. More houses are being built directly behind their backstop and along the western property line. I cannot and would not take my wife and two daughters that are elementary school age on a walk if they are shooting. The firing range backstop is inadequate, and their aim is unsafe and unsatisfactory. Please take action before someone is needlessly injured or killed. It is only a matter of time based on the frequency of their shooting and the increase in the population density of Northbrook. A reasonable compromise would be that they shoot east toward their own shed on their property, or they could easily build a better backstop berm adjacent to their shed. Consider helping them obtain dirt for the new housing going up." And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? I don't see any. Please tell your husband thank you for his service.
I will.
Where is he deployed at?
I can't say, but he is in the Middle East.
Well, we truly appreciate what he does, and thank you for being a...
Appreciate, yeah. I'm not the public speaker, so this makes me nervous.
You did good.
Okay, he gave me the script, so if there's no other questions, I'll sit down and let someone else talk.
All right, thank you. I don't see any questions. The next person, can please come up? Is there... There we go. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Baker. I live at 3424 Laughlin Street in Derby, Kansas, 67037. I will say, I still want to read my statement. It was written after wonderful Facebook comment reading on someone I cannot confirm nor deny is even involved in this. It might have been someone stirring up drama, but it's still how I feel, and it's still something that I feel like I need to say. My family and I live in the Northbrook neighborhood. Growing up, I lived in a very pro-gun household, was taught gun safety at a very early age. We also lived in the country and practiced regularly on our homemade shooting range. Before I was allowed a firearm of my own, my father made sure I could follow three rules. The first two being the same ones every gun owner notes. Don't aim or point your weapon towards people or buildings, and always know what's behind your target. To drive the point home, my father had a third rule. You're responsible for every bullet that leaves your chamber, whether it hits the intended target or not. He would say, "Good or bad, you have to take responsibility for your decisions to pull the trigger in the first place." He made sure I understood that this was applicable in any situation where I may use my gun, whether it be self-defense, hunting, or even target practicing. Now I find myself and my family living next door to people who may not share these same views on gun safety. Our house happens to back up to the tree line dividing these two properties in question. Every time we start hearing the gunshots, I have to make my two daughters stop playing outside and go inside. I have to lock my two dogs in the house so they don't run around the neighborhood or my backyard. And it is very hard to explain to a four-year-old that they can't play in their own backyard because a stray bullet might get her or her little sister. Sorry. I can understand reluctance to change what one's been doing on their own property for many years, how it can be viewed as not fair or infringement on their rights, but I would also say that it is not fair to me and my family, and also infringement on our rights, that I can't even take my daughters and my dog on a walk around our neighborhood in fear that they might start target shooting, and I can't get back to my home in enough time. If for some reason, and I'll say this is in reference to some things that I read that may not have been any of them, but if for some reason they think the new neighborhood next to them isn't their responsibility, they'd be correct. The neighborhood isn't their responsibility, but it is the bullets leaving their guns are their responsibility. I don't know the answer to this problem. That's what we have you guys for. I don't know if the laws and ordinances, I don't know what they allow, I don't know what rules we have to follow, but we have options of them building a proper berm in their property. We have the option of the neighborhood building a wall around the houses. We have other options that may not have even been explored yet. I'm not necessarily confident that the threat of a $500 fine would change any actions that we've seen thus far, but I do hope it's a step in the right direction. What I do know is that I have neighbors who've heard bullets whizzing by them when they're outside standing on their deck in their backyard. I know that I have neighbors who have property damage on their fence lines from these bullets. And I also know that a satisfactory decision must be made before it's not just a fence that's hit and it's one of our children. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time and your attention in this manner.
Thank you for your comments. Any questions for the Speaker? And I don't see any right now, so thank you again. All right. Next Speaker, please.
Hello. Mine will be brief, and I second what both the women said. I live on the street that backs up the hedgerow. I believe Commissioner Howell saw the video that was mine of my house actually got peppered with a bird shell. I guess I just had two points to add to the ladies. First, when we made that, calling the police was kind of a problem with that area. We were separated between Derby, if we were dealing with Derby Police or County Police, and they kept shifting that information back and forth. And then I was kind of born into the wrong era, as far as I'm not much of a social media person, my wife is a big one, and just seeing some comments on there, we have a neighborhood page where they've been talking with this potential person that's been doing this shooting, and recommendations to him have been reinforce his shooting range, and his comment back are a little worrisome. He doesn't seem that he cares at all about what is happening with these bullets and how it's affecting our neighborhood, so that's really all I got.
And for the record, you need to state your name and address, please.
My name's Joe Brown. I live at 3460 Laughlin Street.
Joe, good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
Yes, sir. I didn't know you were in that neighborhood. All right. So, any other speakers? I don't see any. Mike, do we have to say that we had any ex parte conversations? Oh, yeah, one more? Okay, all right, that's okay.
But to address your question, Mr. Chairman, we usually do that in quasi-judicial matters and zoning matters and that sort of thing. You don't need to do it in a neighborhood like this resolution.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Bill Hangstat. I live at 5731 South Joel Lane, and the police have come to my residence many times. I'm one of them that shoots, and I can show an exhibit of my backstop. I have never once said that I don't think that their opinions matter, because it does to me. I've been a shooter for over 40 years. I was in the military for 35 years. I built a backstop to make sure that none of my rounds leave my property. My backstop is six foot tall, seven foot wide, and it has a box of dirt, it's all made out of railroad ties, four foot deep behind it. I know that nothing is ever going to go through my backstop, and I take every effort that I can to make sure nothing goes over or beside my backstop, so it doesn't leave my property. We have, if we have new shooters come to our house, we run them through a safety course. I have a lot of military that shoot out there, a lot of police officers that shoot out there. We're doing everything that we can to make it as safe as possible, and I welcome anybody in the neighborhood to come see what we have and provide even the recommendations that they would suggest that I do. I'm going to raise my berm, my backstop, two more high, so it's going to be up close to seven foot, and I'm willing to work with anybody to try and keep our rights to be able to shoot on our property.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Brown, thank you for coming today. I appreciate hearing your perspective. I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
So, it sounds like you're very confident, you're very confident that a bullet will not leave your property.
Yes, sir.
Are you supportive of the resolution with that in mind?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other comments at this time. If you don't mind, can I ask if Sheriff Easter, since this ordinance would impact your operations a little more than what you already are doing, if you could just, are you okay with this? Or you want to just make any comments about the impact of this ordinance?
Sure. I was contacted by Commissioner Howell in reference to the Johnson County resolution. That is something that Chief Lee had sent to me when this problem first developed. That's more in the Commissioners' bivouac on resolutions, so that's where that was directed to, and Mr. Howell took that up. And so, looking at the resolution, it does add something to our toolkit to be able to enforce any laws that might be broken, because at this point, there is nothing that can be done about that now. It's important to understand that any property damage or anybody that's struck by a bullet, absolutely, we have the laws in place to enforce that and will enforce that. We've had to do that in other parts of the county, when unfortunately, some people have been struck by stray rounds. And so, looking at this ordinance, it's not a, something that is going to solve all the problems, because it's not. The fact of the matter is, is that it gives us a tool to investigate if, you know, we're able to recover the round that went by somebody, and then also investigate the person that fired that round, to compare the round, those type of things, just like we have to do in any other investigation, to hold somebody responsible for irresponsible shooting. Now, with that said, what I'm hoping is, and I'm encouraged by what I'm hearing today, we are doing a community meeting tonight with neighbors that live in that neighborhood, and then the next juncture in this is we'll have a meeting with the homeowners that live out in the county to get their side of this. And then ultimately, we want to bring everybody together to come up with a solution, so that it's not law enforcement orientated, where somebody gets fined or somebody has to go to jail. Ultimately, in these neighborhood disputes, what you're wanting to do is come up with a resolution that's good for both sides, so both sides can live the way they want to live, in a peaceful neighborhood, and also be able to do what they want to do on their property. And that's what the goal that we're working towards at this point.
Okay. Sorry about the paper shuffling here.
That's all right.
Okay, so, thanks for addressing us. So, I think you've covered it. Thank you for having a community meeting as well to maybe, in the past, that's kind of when I was, when there's a police dispute in the cities, and the neighborhood get-togethers are usually pretty productive and end up with good solutions, so I'm...
Most of the time, it ends up that way, where there is some agreement. Sometimes you have one side or the other that feels very strongly about what they do, and then we have to be involved from an enforcement side. I will tell you that when we have county line budding up to city limits, we had that discussion the other day, when we met with some of the neighbors, that, I don't know why that happened, but we've corrected it, because it should not matter where you live at, whether it's in the county or in the city of Derby. We should be working together to resolve those issues and not shifting the paperwork back and forth to each other. That's not what we do. It happened in this particular incident, but we've resolved it at this point.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz has a question.
Thank you, Chairman. So, has there been any community meetings around this resolution up to today?
There was a meeting that Commissioner Howell put together down at City Hall in Derby that involved Derby Police Department, myself, the Derby Assistant City Manager, and some of the neighbors that live in that particular neighborhood that reside in Derby.
But no, there were no other meetings in any of them?
No, we were in the process of setting up a community meeting when the resolution part came up, so we decided to postpone that meeting with the neighbors until today. Whether this resolution passes or not, we wanted to give out good information on whether it passed or not.
So, you just mentioned that you wanted to have community meetings so that a resolution for both sides could be created, but yet we're creating one today without any community input?
Well, there was community input from the meeting that Commissioner Howell put together down at City Hall in Derby that involved Derby Police Department, myself, the Derby Assistant City Manager, and some of the neighbors that live in that particular neighborhood that reside in Derby.
But no, there were no other meetings in any of them?
No, we were in the process of setting up a community meeting when the resolution part came up, so we decided to postpone that meeting with the neighbors until today. Whether this resolution passes or not, we wanted to give out good information on whether it passed or not.
So, you just mentioned that you wanted to have community meetings so that a resolution for both sides could be created, but yet we're creating one today without any community input?
Well, there was community input from the meeting that Commissioner Howell put together, yes.
From one district?
I couldn't answer that.
Right. I don't know.
Okay.
Okay. And Sheriff, one last quick comment from me. These pictures that we have as an example, have you seen, are these, in your opinion, adequate for...
I have not seen them, no, sir.
Okay. All right, maybe we can get you a copy. I mean, they look pretty solid, but I just wanted to know from your perspective.
I will tell you, I looked at the article in the paper. That does not look like a very good berm setup to me at all.
Right.
This is a lot more sturdy than what I've seen in the paper. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right, thanks. A couple more questions, and I don't know who was first. Commissioner Howell, do you want to go, or do you want to wait?
Yeah, I'd like to talk, if that's okay. Thank you, Chairman. First of all, let me just say thank you, Sheriff, for your personal attention to this. We did have that one meeting in the city of Derby with representatives of the neighborhood. So, there's a lot of folks that are talking to each other in the neighborhood. They've organized communication between the neighbors, and they brought, if you will, spokesperson, spoke, people to represent the neighborhood came to that meeting, and they're communicating back and forth. So, I don't think this is just one person, this is the entire neighborhood. As a Commissioner, I'm the longest-serving Commissioner at this time, and I would say I've probably had about maybe one incident like this each year, and most of the time, the sheriff goes out and speaks with the people shooting guns, and usually they will change their behavior somewhat and do things a little bit differently, and usually there's a feasible resolution. In this case, there has been a lot of, I should say, the narrative that I'm hearing from some of the folks is that they have their rights, they're going to continue doing what they've done there for a long time, and there's nothing we can do to stop them. So, in the past, it has been frustrating that there has been no tool in the toolbox. The sheriff doesn't have a lot of things they can do until there's some type of injury, then that's when things really come unhinged, so to speak. They're going to do a very thorough criminal investigation if someone gets injured, but until that happens, there's not a lot of things that can happen, so we wanted to add a tool to the toolbox, again, to follow Johnson County's example. They spent a lot of time at this. I did contact the gun rights groups that work with their attorneys, and they verified our language was acceptable. We're trying to underscore that responsible Second Amendment owners, or Second Amendment people who practice Second Amendment, gun owners, that they demonstrate responsible behavior. And when you shoot a gun, I just commend Sarah Baker, her dad is exactly right. When he said you need to know where every bullet's going to go, you need to know what's beyond your target, those are exactly the types of things we have to teach people and practice when we're shooting guns. But that's not been practiced in some of these cases, because the bullets are landing in this neighborhood around these children. So, we have a problem, and the people are refusing to change their behavior, so if they continue doing exactly what they've been doing, I want to give the sheriff a tool to hopefully rein in this irresponsible behavior and bring it back to a level of responsibility. I want to just say thank you for what you've done, and I appreciate your support on this. That's really why I wanted to speak while you were at the podium, is just to let you know that I appreciate what you have done, your support has been great, and when someone has a complaint right now, they're going to call 911, knowing that the shooters are in the county, the county sheriff deputies will have to respond, and you're going to provide training to them and make sure they know about what we're doing today, so they can have that conversation with those folks, and let them know, remind them what the law is. If there's evidence of a bullet crossing the property line, that there's going to be consequences if the sheriff would want to pursue that. So, this adds a tool to the toolbox, and it doesn't mean that they can't shoot guns. My only question for you is, does this mean that they can't shoot guns?
No, it does not.
It does not, right. What we're actually asking them to do is just do it responsibly, and that's the problem. And so, I think that when bullets are, there's evidence of bullets going beyond the target, that's where this necessity of this has come up, and the people refuse to change anything what they're doing. They just demand they're going to exercise their rights and do exactly what they've been doing for all these years, and so that attitude is now a problem. So, that's why this has come up. We can have more community meetings, but there's some urgency to this. So, we do plan on meeting with the Northbrook community this evening, and as you said, will be future meetings going on, but at the end of the day, I don't think we're going to relax this. It's not going to go any less restrictive than what this has. It's not going to be any less punitive than what this is. So, I don't know why we would necessarily not pass this today. So, that's my comment. Thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, and I think you kind of hit on my question, but if we adopt this today, and then we have these community meetings later, I mean, are we going to then have to adopt a new resolution, or would we change this one, or what would that look like if, I guess that's...
I don't believe so, ma'am. Like I said, there's, you know, this resolution that Commissioner Howell has proposed, there's nothing right now that we can do for folks that believe that, you know, bullets have whizzed by them or their family, except go out and educate. Now, I've seen my entire career bullets whizzed by people, and I've missed them by this much. I've also seen where it didn't miss them and it killed them. And so, I've also seen in the county where we've had two people that have been shot by stray bullets. Those people were charged. And so, this resolution gives us the ability to hopefully hold somebody accountable before somebody is hurt. I will tell you, you know, it doesn't solve everything, because the fact of the matter is, anybody can claim a bullet with... is anybody can claim a bullet whizzed by them. So we've got to prove that it did, which means we have to recover the round, we have to prove who shot it, and then hold that person responsible. So this is not just an open and shut, "Well, a bullet whizzed by five people, we're out there shooting, we're going to charge all five." That's not what's going to happen because it can't. And so I don't see that there would be anything else added to this resolution after these meetings. Our hope is, by meeting with both groups separately, we come up with some solutions, and then we bring them all together, and we make those solutions happen so this just disappears and it doesn't have to happen. But I will tell you, there's other parts of the county, mainly out in western part of Cedric County, where we have these issues as well.
So will we have community meetings in those areas as well and not just in this one specific area?
When we have... We've resolved two of the other issues out in the western part of Cedric County. When we have those issues arise again, absolutely.
Okay. So it sounds like this would be helpful for you and your team.
Yes, it can be to hold people responsible for irresponsible firing that it doesn't hit property or people.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other questions at this time, so... Justin, do you have anything? Okay. Any questions? Commissioner Cruz has a question.
Justin, yesterday I received a call from a person up in my district. They were a little confused about this. I guess they have a gun range. Can you speak to what a gun range will have to do?
Sure. Commissioner Cruz, on that, I mean, a gun range would still need to ensure that, you know, or the people using the gun range should ensure that the bullets remain on the property. I think... Let me kind of talk through a couple of things. First of all, I think, you know, they would still be subject to this resolution, the people using the gun range would be, and would need to take measures to ensure that the bullets remain on the property, aren't going on to other folks' properties. I imagine most gun ranges take measures to do that, both for public safety, for their own liability, those types of things. And probably the second piece on that would be to note that I don't think the sheriff's office or the county councilor's office is looking to prosecute the, you know, just a single instance of a kind of a bullet going astray where it is safely used. And I don't think that's very likely to happen with most gun ranges because I think they do set them up safely to where there aren't going to be bullets going on to other properties. So I think that's... I don't think there's any reason they wouldn't be able to continue operating. This doesn't prohibit the shooting of firearms. It just does it to where it needs to be done in a safe manner, to where the bullets aren't flying on to other people's properties. And I would hope and also kind of presume that gun ranges are structured where that does not occur.
I hope so. Okay, so my question is, where is this located on our site that folks can read it? Because there was some trouble with people finding it, and so that's really... This kind of came up really fast, and I think there's been some confusion around what exactly it means when you talk about regulating guns. If someone isn't able to find the resolution or really understand sort of the ins and outs of it, how are we going to communicate this in a way that people understand exactly what it means? Because I'll just be real frank with you, this is really fast. It came up really fast. I really even had... I haven't had time to digest it. I've had some calls of people coming at me like that they don't even understand it. So that's really the main concern, I guess. I think everyone has a right to be safe in their homes. Last night about 3:00 AM, I heard some gunshots right down the street from my house. I live in the city, so, you know, I get it. It is a scary thing, and I don't... I definitely want to make sure that we have the right regulation if we're going to regulate.
Commissioner Cruz, I think the resolution was part of the agenda materials that were sent out, as is customarily done, but that is just a handful of days before today's meeting. I think it went out on like Monday, if I remember correctly.
Right, and I was gone out of town, so, you know, that's a little... I just... I want to make sure that we do our due diligence in speaking with everyone, and I really haven't had time to speak with folks. I've had people calling me saying, "Hey, what is this?" And so that's really kind of my main concern is, you know, we have community conversations about a lot of things, and while I understand that this is impacting one area, there are a lot of other areas that we would need to make sure that people understand exactly what it means. And so how do we plan to communicate that if this does pass, communications team?
Commissioner Cruz, I don't want to necessarily speak for Tanya. Do you want me to... I think one thing that could be done on this, or a couple of different things, is obviously the resolution. If it were adopted, or if you guys would defer it and you'd want to post it publicly, it could be posted on the county's website. I know in Johnson County, they had a question and answer item that really, I mean, was pretty similar to my presentation here today, but just said, "Hey, this is what it does. It doesn't mean you can't own a gun. It doesn't mean you can't go out and shoot your gun. It just needs to make sure that your gun, that your bullets aren't going on to other people's property when you use your gun." Tanya, did you want to add anything?
I think Justin answered that appropriately. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. Commissioner Cruz, we will do whatever we need to to put this information out. We'll put it on the website. We'll do a fact sheet on that, making sure that the community is aware of this change in resolution to make sure that we're getting it out there to the community.
And the ins and outs of what it means, truly. People hear regulating guns, and they're like, "I can't shoot anymore."
Sure.
So I just want to make sure that we are diligent with how we communicate this to other districts. And do you think that a $500 fine will be enough? I guess that's my question to Sheriff Easter. Like, what's really going to stop somebody from shooting a...
I have no idea if the fine will be enough. I mean, we fine people $200 for speeding tickets and they get another one next week, so, you know, I really don't know, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. I've been a life member of the National Rifle Association since early 1990s. I love to hunt. I love to shoot. I shoot skeet. I target practice, but I do it safely. I know where my round is going to end up, or I don't pull the trigger. And that's especially important when I'm out deer hunting because I carry a 7mm. This is going to go a long way. And so you have to make sure, even though you're out in the middle of nowhere, I don't have a backstop like Mr. Brown has created when I'm out deer hunting, but you absolutely have to know where that bullet's going to stop. When I go out and sight in my weapons to make sure that it's ready to go. Now, the one thing, I appreciate the backstop that Mr. Brown has put together, but the other thing is when I'm at most places where that I sight in my weapons, there's also baffles up above that keep a round from traveling outside of that area. I think the sheriff's firing range out at Lake Afton has baffles up above to make sure that a round does not go out above it. So even though I think this is a very adequate backstop to stop everything, including my 7mm, it's not going to stop it if it goes up above it. I've had personal experience. The attorney that we had when I was on the State Board of Education was sitting at a stoplight with her daughter in the car, and a round fired from somewhere killed her, sitting there in front of her daughter. So these loose rounds do kill people. So, you know, I see both sides of it because I carry a weapon often, but you have to carry it responsibly. You have to make sure that whatever you do does not harm someone else. Your rights to fire that weapon stop when they are going to endanger someone else. So I support this resolution. I will be voting in favor of it. I hope that the responsible gun owners understand that we're not trying to take their rights away from them as responsible gun owners. What we're trying to do is protect the public from irresponsible gun owners. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, can I... With regard to Commissioner Cruz's question, I might wish to make a clarifying comment. Is that okay?
Sure.
Commissioner Cruz, and I think the sheriff answered correctly, that it's tough to know exactly what will dissuade somebody from taking part in behavior that may be unsafe with their guns. But I think for some context, it's worth indicating that the behavior that's contemplated in this resolution, if there is sufficient evidence, that kind of behavior, if a bullet... As Sheriff Easter noted, if the bullet hits somebody, hit a property, hit a dwelling, that could support felony charges under state law, maybe misdemeanor, depends on what it hits, what damage is done. This resolution would not be inconsistent with any of that. It would just allow for a county code violation for the same type of behavior. So somebody today who goes out and shoots their gun in this manner, if the bullet ends up hitting someone, ends up hitting their house, and there's enough evidence to prove it, they're going to be charged criminally. The district attorney's office is going to be bringing those charges, not the county councilor's office. So there is already that. There's also, you know, significant civil liability. I think some of the speakers noted, when your bullet goes somewhere, you're responsible for it. Legally, you are responsible for where that bullet goes. And, you know, obviously, if it's like a wrongful death lawsuit, those can be millions of dollars. So I think it's worth noting that there are already current tools in place that may far exceed the $500. You know, that could result in prison time, million-dollar lawsuits, those types of things. But this resolution does present another tool to address this situation.
Thanks, Justin. That's good information. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion in just a few minutes, but before I do that, I have a few more comments I'd like to make. Just doing some quick research, the NRA, I think, recommends that a berm that's safe would be 12 feet high. So again, I do see some examples of this on the internet, very similar to this, as a great way to stop a bullet, but I think there's also some assumption that there's not houses right behind it. So I would suggest that adding a foot to this may not be enough. I would certainly want to... Again, I love the answer. I asked if the owner was absolutely certain and confident there's zero chance that a bullet would ever get around or over or through this backstop, and his answer was absolutely certain. And I appreciate that. You know, perhaps someone would accidentally shoot a little too high, and maybe it would go over the seven-foot or six-foot tie. That might be a problem. So again, I understand that there's zero intent to do that, but could it happen? I think theoretically, it certainly seems like it could. One of the... As I met with owners out there at the neighborhood, one of the things they said was, and I thought it was kind of humorous, actually, but they said, "If they really believe this berm is going to stop the bullets, they should turn around and shoot the other direction, shoot towards their own home." Of course, they don't think anybody would want to do that. But if you really believe it's going to stop the bullets, I guess that's actually not a bad point to be made by the homeowners at Northbrook. So the reality is, we want to make sure that whatever's going on out there with people shooting their guns is done safely. And that's why we're having this discussion today. We have, right now, people who feel threatened. I reflect on the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution. Talks about the right to own property and due process, the takings clause in that amendment. When someone can't use their property because they feel threatened because someone else is exercising their constitutional rights, it's a taking of your own property. It's taking of your own freedom. And so this is a constitutional battle going on here between the Second Amendment and the Fifth Amendment, between these neighbors. And so the reality is, everyone has the right to exercise their constitutional rights and freedoms, but your freedoms stop when you start trampling on someone else's freedoms, or your rights stop when you start trampling on someone else's rights. And so there's got to be a respect between people when these rights clash, and that's exactly what's going on in this case. I'd like to point out, we are using the word "resolution" today because that's what the piece of paper, the word discussing, the document in front of us is called a resolution. And when the sheriff was speaking a moment ago, he used the word "a resolution" between neighbors. We're using two different terms of this word. Today, we're actually passing, if you will, and, Justin, please correct me if I'm wrong, but this is actually a county law. Let's use a word that's maybe more understandable by the public. In fact, in Section D, it says, "Such violations shall be a Class 1 offense as indicated within Section 8-5 of the Cedric County Code." So there is a law, okay? This is a new county law. It's not just a resolution, although we're using that term because that's what the paper's called in front of us, but it's actually a law. If you would like to clarify or correct what I just said, Justin, I welcome your comments.
I think that's correct. And I do think when the sheriff said the word "resolution," he meant a resolution between the neighbors.
Right.
And being able to get along with one another on this issue, not, I don't think the resolution that's in front of you.
Exactly. I just want to make that clarification because we use the word two different ways in today's meeting. There's also some exemptions in this law. Let's talk about that because I don't think it's been stated yet, but let's be clear. If you're discharging a firearm in the lawful defense of life, that's always okay, no matter where you are. Now, if you use a firearm and you have somehow been negligent or reckless, and you didn't do it in the right way, you did something that was not defensible, then the law enforcement officers will probably do what they have to do to charge you with a crime. And that's something that the courts will sort out. But the reality is, if you are using a firearm in the correct way to defend life, that is fine. This has no impact on that whatsoever. I had one email, someone said they thought this was somehow going to restrict the right to defend themselves. That's not true. Your right to defend yourself is, I think, the most basic purpose of the Second Amendment, is the right to defend yourself. So we're not trampling on that in any way. The second thing that's exempt in this is a law enforcement officer. If a law enforcement officer needs to use his firearm to do anything that they would normally do, this is not going to be a restriction on that law enforcement officer in any way. And the third thing is, if you're out there hunting, the phrase says, "You're out there engaging in bona fide hunting activities in conformity with the requirements established under Kansas law." There is an exemption for that. So we're not trying to harm people hunting, and there's a paragraph that deals with that issue. Okay. Talk about $500. Justin, I'm glad you're still at the podium. We, in Cedric County, we don't have any way right now, unless we change, if you will, our fine structure. The maximum fine in Cedric County right now is $500. Am I correct about that?
That's correct, under our fine schedule, yes.
So we could change the fine schedule. That would be another resolution to do that, and that potentially would have impact on other things we do here in the county. I don't want to go from zero to, you know, 200 miles an hour in this policy. My hope is that $500, we'll see behavior change the way we need it to change. And if it doesn't, I guess we'll come back and discuss potentially changing the fines to something more punitive than $500. But I think the $500, hopefully, will get the results we need. I don't want to go to extreme discussion, you know, if we don't need to. If we can get the results we want with $500, then that's great. Johnson County passed their resolution, very similar, actually nearly identical to this. Their maximum fine is $1,000, and theirs also did pass unanimously. And they have, you know, a wide diversity of political affiliation up in Johnson County, and again, it passed unanimously up in Johnson County. So I appreciate the fact that we have that example to look at. This also did follow the normal timeline. I worked with legal. I worked with constituents. I did my research. I talked to the NRA and the KSRA. I talked to people in Johnson County. I've talked to our legal experts. I've talked to Chief Lee. Thank you for your support, Chief Lee, in the city of Derby, chief of police in the city of Derby. I talked with the sheriff. We had our community meeting. We had this drafted. We had it edited, numerous edits, trying to get the language exactly right. We had our community meeting, and it got put into the agenda in a normal timeline. So this idea that we're not giving the public advanced notice and they have no way to know what's going on, it's just not true. The reality is, we could slow this down if we wanted to, but there's no requirement to do that. In fact, I'll tell you, once we pass this today, assuming that it passes, we have to publish this in the county, official county newspaper, which then would be published on October 27th. And that's the moment this actually becomes an official law of Cedric County. Well, I have no doubt, we'll also put this out on newsletters. We'll put this out on... The media's already picked it up. I've seen numerous news articles. Thank you for the Wachita Eagle, great job. KWCH, KSN's already ran articles. I heard it on KNSN, what is it called? Radio this morning. So it's all over the place. People are aware of it. We're going to continue talking about it, and after today's meeting, I'm sure that the media's going to continue doing what they're doing. It's all over Facebook as well. So the people know, and if they don't know, they need to know. And by the way, if they don't know, and they're shooting guns, and the projectiles are going on to someone else's property, they'll find out because the sheriff's going to get called, and they're going to be educated by the sheriff. Thank you, Sheriff. I think I've said plenty, but the reality is, this is important, and I think I'm glad that we're doing this. I am a huge Second Amendment supporter. I'm actually on the Board of Directors of the KSRA. I don't think this is a conflict of interest. Is this, Mr. Papoun, for me to do this today? Okay, thank you, clarify that. It grieves me that we have to have a law, because I think common sense should say we would do things that are respectful to neighbors. But when you don't do the right thing, that's when laws get developed. So here we are. And I don't like the fact that this can be construed by some people as me being anti-Second Amendment. That is not true. I am probably, I'm almost extreme in my support for Second Amendment, okay? But I also want to be common sense, and I want to be rational as well. This needs to happen today because these neighbors have a right to use their property. Their kids have a right to play in their backyard. By the way, thank you for the pictures of that one berm, but let's be clear, most of the berms in your neighbors' backyards aren't anywhere like, they're not like that at all. They're shorter, they're not as well-constructed. The one that you have to give pictures of is very well-constructed, good job. I think it could be better. It could be taller, maybe wider, but nevertheless, you did a great job trying. But the berms in other people's backyards are woefully inadequate, in my opinion, from what I've seen. The bullets are flying into people's yards. We have to find a way to stop it. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion. We would adopt this resolution today. Thank you.
Okay. A motion and a second. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to reiterate that it is vital that people feel safe in their homes. So I am not saying that I'm not going to support this. However, I am not in support of how this came about because, you know, as a representative of over 100,000 people, I have not had a chance to speak to the people that I represent. And so to say that this has followed the process and been given the exact amount of time that it takes is just not true. This came up very quickly. The amount of community input has been sort of isolated to a neighborhood that has been impacted, which I completely understand that there is a reason we are discussing this. But I am a little concerned with the fact that, I mean, I just received an email from someone saying, "There has not been a meeting set up with the neighborhood doing the shooting, just the neighborhood complaining." That's a quote from the email I just received. So I guess I just want to make sure that we are getting community buy-in and an understanding of what this is before we enact something that people aren't understanding exactly what it entails, why we're doing it. I think you get more input and you get more buy-in from people who are engaged in the process. I mean, we had an ethics policy that, like, went forever and ever and ever in rounds of edits that only really affects our 3,000 employees, but yet this affects hundreds of thousands of people, and we're passing it right away without a community buy-in. So I guess I'm just a little hesitant of the process and how quickly this is coming Because at the end of the day, we want for behavior to be changed. And if we haven't talked to, according to this individual, the neighborhood that is doing the shooting, are we going to get the buy-in that we need in order for this to be effective? And so that's kind of where I'm coming from with this. You can say that you took the necessary steps, but that is not the case. This is very fast. And so that's kind of where I'm at.
Commissioner Lopez?
I just have one question. I know that Sheriff Easter mentioned you have a meeting already set up with one neighborhood. Do you know when the meeting will be set up for the neighborhood that Commissioner Cruz just mentioned?
Yes, we're looking at next week, after we meet with the neighbors tonight and get their side of what's going on. Our plans are to contact all the neighbors that have property that line up with the tree line and those type of things, to meet with them as well. And our hope is, is to get then both groups together. And so we generally meet separately when we have these type of issues, so we can get unfiltered what they want without the other side becoming agitated or angry. And then we do the same thing with the other side, so.
Okay. And if we get emails, like Commissioner Cruz, I have not received emails from my district regarding this, so. But if we do, who's the best person that we can send this to? I mean, should we send it to legal? Should we send it to our sheriff's department? I mean, what's the best, what's the right way to get the right answers to?
Emails in reference to the resolution?
Yeah, about any of the changes that are going to be, or any questions about the resolution, or any of that. I mean, what would be the best route for us if we're getting these emails? Who should we get in touch with so we make sure that people get the right answers quickly?
Yeah, I would say either, if this passes today, then it becomes our responsibility to actually educate along with the law department. If this is deferred for a vote later, then it would be the law department because it's not a law that we're enforcing as of yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. So in light of the urgency and the meeting that is tonight, and again, getting buy-in with the folks that are involved, rather than saying, "We have a resolution, now you have to follow this," without their input at all, I think they're going to have more buy-in if they were able to discuss it tonight, instead of saying, "Here it is, this is law now." So I will make a motion to defer for one week so that we can consult with the neighborhood meeting tonight and the neighborhoods around the county, considering that this is a 500,000-plus county. So I will make a motion to defer for one week.
Let me choose.
Well, we're going to have to.
There, as of now, there's not a meeting set for next week. Commissioner Lopez?
I am in favor of this. I want to make, you know, make that clear, as long as, you know, we're not taking rights away from people, right? I mean, there's just going to be a penalty if these go outside of their property. So I'm in favor of that. But I do see why we would want to look into this a little bit more, get more community input, so I could understand that. And if Commissioner Cruz feels more comfortable waiting until she gets some of that, I'm okay with that because I do think this will pass. So I would second that.
Okay. So that's a substitute motion to delay, but till when?
Well, she said one week, but again, as has been pointed out, or maybe it hadn't been pointed out, we are currently scheduled to have a meeting next week, so you're almost deciding to have a special meeting as well.
I will defer for two weeks till November 3rd. I will change my motion to be a defer for two weeks to November 3rd.
Is that a second also? Commissioner Lopez? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to be clear, we have heard from two people, at least I have, from the area. One of them is here this morning, and thank you for clarifying that you are supportive of what we're doing here today. So that's one. I received, by the way, anybody could have emailed us, and I know that there's one person that did email four commissioners, left me off their email, but I did get a copy of it. So they did speak to it, and their position is, they want the housing addition to build up a protective wall around the housing addition. It should be their responsibility. They're also upset that the commissioners allowed this housing addition to be built. It's changed their right to shoot guns the way they have for 21 years. And again, I hear from this person, but they believe this is not their responsibility. They don't want to change. So I've heard from two. I think that their position, this person's position, is unreasonable. And I hear from them, but I'm not going to agree with them. So again, I think I've been open to hearing from anybody who has rational arguments, but to say we're not going to have a resolution that would prohibit bullets from going into someone else's property and endangering life and limb and children and property, that, to me, seems like it's an unreasonable thought. If we need to come back and amend this at some point in the future because it doesn't do its job, that's fine, we can do that. But think what we're saying today. We're going to delay a resolution that prohibits people from shooting their guns into someone else's property, endangering their children and their life and their property. That doesn't make sense to me. Again, I respectfully disagree that I've not done this correctly. I've done this exactly correctly. Everyone's had a chance to speak. It's a public open meeting today. We listened to the public. I answered my emails. There's no reason to delay this, and so I would encourage the commissioners, please, let's get this done today. Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
I just have one question. Because this has been, obviously, a problem that's been going on for quite some time. This isn't like something started last week. But was there a specific incident that caused this to be on the agenda today? I'm just, I guess I want, has anything changed specifically?
I mean, I don't know that I'm able to really answer that. I mean, Commissioner Howell, who requested the resolution that's in front of you today, other than that, I don't really know if the sheriff or Commissioner Howell's anything to add on that, but I can't speak to it.
I just didn't know if there was an incident that had happened that makes this where it has to be done today. And I'm not saying that I'm against it, because I agree that I, but I just, I'm curious if something had changed, because if this has been a problem for many years, why it has to be done today?
Mr. Chairman, shall I answer the question?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Commissioner Lopez, your question. I would just say that the conflict has bubbled up to the point where it's now extremely conflicted. There's a lot of people really upset on both sides of the issue. I don't want to delay this because it needs to be resolved. And in terms of what caused this to happen, there's been numerous incidents going on over the summer and up until I received word from Northbrook that this was an urgent issue, that they were just beside themselves. They tried to resolve it on their own, and when they asked people to change their behavior, they were met with disrespect, without quoting them exactly. The disrespect was given back. There seemed to be an unwillingness to change. So they're at an impasse. These neighbors are at an impasse, and they come to the government, come to their county commissioner to help resolve this. But the passion on both sides is at a very high level. And so to push this off, in my opinion, is going to just cause this to fester. Do we really need a delay that says we're not going to allow people to continue shooting guns into the neighbor's property? I think it's almost silly we're having a discussion about a delay, in my opinion. We need to move forward. But what caused this to happen right now is the fact that this has festered to the point where we have very, very high passion, and I don't want to see this pushed off. So we can delay it if we really need to delay it, but I really don't think we need to delay it. And I think we've done our job. We did it exactly the way we should have done it. I'm open to lots of people contacting me in many, many different ways, and I'm responsive. And the reality is, every single thing, every decision we make up here does not take, doesn't need to take a month. They elect us to be their representatives. They elect us because they know what we believe and our principles. They expect us to represent them in government, and that's what we're doing today. We're being representatives of the people. We can make a decision. We don't have to be told every single day about how to deal with every single decision that comes up. We have to represent the people. And that, again, as a representative of the people, this is very easy for me. I'm a huge Second Amendment supporter, but this is just about common sense, making people be responsible for their bullets when they shoot their guns. This is not hard. I mean, this is not hard, although I don't like being the guy to push this forward. This is actually easy for me. Responsible gun use is not a problem. So if anybody would have a problem with this, it would be me, I would think, but I'm the one that's pushing it forward. So anyway, I think it's time to, thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Cruz?
Again, I, people have a right to be safe in their homes, and I absolutely do support the fact that people should be responsible gun owners. That is, I am not saying that I'm not going to support this. But it is my job to listen to folks, and I have not had a chance to speak with people regarding this, to make sure this is the best thing for both sides. And so I want people to have an opportunity to discuss this, like the meeting that's being held tonight, because I don't believe making a resolution and then having a meeting after the fact to get buy-in is the way that we really are going to get buy-in from those who this affects the most. And so just to reiterate that fact, I am a, I probably will support this, but I want to speak to folks that I represent first because I have not had that chance. And so if you'll allow me the chance to speak with folks about this, to ensure that I have answered questions and had an opportunity for them to really understand what this means so that there isn't a bunch of opposition because there is a misunderstanding about what it means, I'd like to have that opportunity. And the next opportunity to vote for this, because there is no meeting next week, the first opportunity is November 3rd. So that's why I've made this defer.
Okay, there's a substitute motion and a second to defer this until November 3rd. I don't see any other comments at this time, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meister?
I will say that I will agree to defer this for two weeks, but it's obvious for the record that the commissioners that want to delay it are on record saying they're in fully support of this. Without this resolution that Commissioner Howell has done a lot of work on, then it stays under the old rules, which are very harmful or less improved than what this resolution would do. So I encourage you to get all the feedback you want. We'll show up November 3rd, and we do not need to discuss this for another hour and a half, again, two weeks from now. But I'm reluctantly allowing this to be deferred for two weeks. Get your information, and unless you get information that changes your opinion, then we put this back on the agenda. It's the first item. We bring it up, and if you have something that changed your mind, state so. If not, we've all said everything we need to say, including supporting this resolution. So reluctantly, we'll agree to defer this for two weeks. And so I vote aye. So with that, the motion carries that we defer this item for two weeks, and we will see you November 3rd at the agenda item number one to get this moved and in place. Meanwhile, Sheriff, you'll have a chance to have your meetings with the citizens, and if there's any new news that comes out of that, thank you. And I think Commissioner Howell will probably be present at some of those meetings as well. So thank you. Madam Clerk, thanks, everybody, for being here. We'll allow the room to dismiss for a minute. Thank you, citizens, for being here. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item B, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on October 14th, 2021.
Joe, good morning. How are you?
Doing fine, thank you, sir. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Joe Thomas, purchasing director, and the meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on October 14th. We have 10 items this morning that we're seeking your approval. The first item is employee ancillary benefits, dental benefits. And for human resources, this recommendation is to accept the proposal from Delta Dental of Kansas Incorporated at the rates listed, and this contract starts January 1st, 2022, and will go through three years through December 31st, 2024, and then we'll have two one-year options to renew. Item two is the ancillary benefits for FSA administrations, human resources, and the recommendation is to accept the proposal from Surrance Life and Health Insurance Company, and that's doing business as Surrance at the rates listed, and this will be the same contract period, starting January 1st, 2022, going three years, and then having two one-year options to renew. Item number three, these ancillary benefits are in regards to life insurance. This recommendation is to accept the proposal from Advance Insurance Company of Kansas at the rates listed, and it is for the same time period, January 1st, 2022, for three years, and then two one-year options to renew. Item number four, ancillary benefits, and this is for vision, the human resources. This proposal is to accept the one submitted by VSP at the rates listed, same contract period. Don't think I need to say that again, hopefully. Okay. Sounds like a broken record, don't it?
No, that's good. You're working through it.
Item number five, ancillary benefits for worksite benefits, and so there's several categories. The first one is the accident, and that recommendation is to accept the proposal from Metropolitan Life Insurance Company, doing business as MetLife, and that's for the same contract period. Item number six, this worksite benefit is in regards to critical illness, and this recommendation is with the same proposal from Metropolitan Life Insurance Company, doing business as MetLife for that same contract period. Item number seven, this ancillary benefit for worksite benefits is in regards to hospital indemnity. The recommendation is to accept the proposal from Metropolitan- indemnity. The recommendation is to accept the proposal from Metropolitan Life Insurance Company, doing business as MetLife for the same contract term and period. Item number eight, this worksite benefit is in regards to cancer benefits, and this is recommending the proposal from Metropolitan Life Insurance Company, again, doing business MetLife, for the contract term and period as previous items. And I hope I didn't miss anything. Item number nine, I'm going through and pretty good. Covered them all? Okay, didn't miss one. This is the worksite benefits in regards to short-term disability, and this recommendation is also for proposal received from Metropolitan Life Insurance Company, doing business MetLife for the same contract term and period. Now we shift gears to our 10th item, and this is in regards to the InTrust Bank Arena Telescopic Seating System, Division of Finance, and this funding is through the shuttered venue operators grant. The recommendation on this one is to accept the quote from Irwin Seating Company, and this is based on a Omni Partners Contract R 191-805. The total amount is $4,601,087.63. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions. There are also representatives in regards to the questions, if any questions are in regards to the ancillary benefits, and I recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. That last item is, that's a grant?
Yes, sir.
Was it called it a?
It's called the, hold on a second, sir, the shuttered?
Venue?
Yeah, shuttered venue operators grant.
All right. I didn't see that in the notes, but thank you for clarifying.
Okay.
Oh, there it is. I see it now. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dennis has a question.
Thank you. Real quick, item three, life insurance. One of the things that I've asked a lot of times is I care about our seniors, and one of the things that has happened in the past is that as people age, the value of the life insurance provided by Sedgwick County decreases. My concern has always been that if they're working later in life, they probably need the money. And if they pass away, their next of kin probably needs the money. And I have been advocating that we have a level set of life insurance for everyone, including our seniors. Does this proposal include that?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Sheena Schmitz, Chief Human Resources Officer. The plan that we have in front of you is, again, based on the employee's salary amount, and again, that would decrease as the age increases. We did look at an option for having a set amount for employees across the board, but that was at significant cost to the county. We opted to keep with the same plan that we have.
Okay, so what you're saying is it's based on the salary, not on the age?
It's, so the life insurance that we would have is based upon their salary amount, and those are broken into different categories. And then as the employee ages, then amounts do go down. So, and I believe that's pretty standard with the industry. I have our IMA consultants here that with life insurance, amounts do.
I know, but I've asked you over and over again that that's age discrimination. We are discriminating against the people that need it the most. So when it comes time, I'm going to pull item three and vote against it.
Okay.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, thank you, thank you for being at the podium. Which one of these items would be a short-term and long-term disability policy? It's actually hard to, I don't see that term actually in here, so.
That is item number nine. It's the worksite benefits under short-term disability.
Okay.
Number nine.
Okay. Just a repeated comment. I would like, one of my concerns about this, this locks us in for, I think, what, three years?
That's correct, with two one-year options to renew.
So three to five years.
Yes.
And one of my, one of the things I've talked about quite a lot over the years is the idea that we need to explore, if you will, a personal time off policy, a PTO policy. That would be something that I would, I would encourage existing employees to transition into if they wanted to. I wouldn't, I would grandfather anybody that wants to stay in their current plan. But for existing employees, would prefer a PTO policy, and then for new employees, a PTO policy, personal time off. What that would do, it would replace our standard sick leave and vacation policy. That works better, a PTO policy works better if you have a good short-term, long-term disability plan. Some companies actually negotiate those on behalf of the employees as a group plan. Whereas this is basically something employees can opt into this and pay for the premiums for that benefit if they want it. I'm sure it's a good deal, but it's done at the, you know, by the employee's decision and at the employee's cost. A PTO policy, if they don't have, they say they don't have, they don't have 2,500 hours of sick leave, and they were to get sick, they would be, the PTO policy would be capped, in my opinion, would be capped at two years' worth of earnings. They would be paid, they would be paid out on their anniversary for anything over their cap. Once an hour is in their, in their account, it would be, it would be paid for that hour, regardless of whether they were terminated, or they quit, or retired, they would, they would, they would own, they would, they could look at that as, if you will, savings, and they can use it however they want to, whenever they want to. But right now, they get, I believe, what, I believe 96 hours of sick leave and 80 hours of vacation as a new employee. And so if you put all that together, it would be, whatever that adds up to, it would be that and their personal time off policy, and then they could use that as they needed to. If they did get sick, and they didn't have enough PTO to cover long-term, you know, a longer-term disability, and a longer-term absence, that's where the short-term disability and the long-term disability kick in. So the PTO would need to transition them to that point when these things would start. But that would be, that would be a replacement plan versus what we have now, where people save up. A long-term employee might have 2,500 hours of sick leave. And, and again, if they, if they have some debilitating issue where they're not able to work, that's a good thing until it runs out. But for younger employees, they don't have that much, they don't have that much resource. And so what I'm actually asking for is for something that would actually be able to help every employee, regardless of their tenure. And it would actually help us not overstaff, because when employees call in sick, it leaves one of two options for managers. Either they have to have overtime, or they have to underserve the public. The other option, of course, is to overstaff a little bit and anticipate absences. In either case, I believe it's a cost to taxpayers, or it's a disservice to the people. So there's a consequence of not having a good policy, in my opinion. It actually costs taxpayers, not, costs taxpayers money. I also think it's not as good for the employees, because they, a lot of employees will try to use that sick leave as soon as they get it. And again, I'm not saying that they lie, but they might need a mental health day, for example, and they would just say, I need to take off today, because it doesn't feel like coming in for some reason, or whatever it would be. But a lot of our, a lot of employees tend to use those days when they get them, and so they get, they keep their sick leave account, account pretty low. Having said that, if they were able to use it as a PTO day, they could couple that with what we could think of as traditional vacation, for example, and have a much better time off. So it's good for employees. It's better for them to manage their personal time. They don't have to, they don't have to actually use it to get paid. They can get paid regardless of whether they use it or not. I think it would save taxpayer money. It's better for the employees. It's better for the employers. It's better for the public. We need to, we need to examine this idea. By the way, the private sector has transitioned into the PTO policies, so we've become more competitive. So again, there's lots of reasons why we want to take a look at this, and we need to be serious about taking a look at this. And so I've been bringing this up year after year after year. But now we're essentially agreeing to a policy that locks us into the old model for another three years without, because we don't have a good employer negotiated, provided PTO, or a short-term, long-term disability plan, the PTO policy doesn't work very well. So I'm a little concerned about number nine. I would like to potentially delay number nine for a short time, where we can have some discussion about whether we want to explore a PTO policy in place of what we currently do in terms of providing this as an option to employees, we currently have, as well as to new employees. I think it's a better, it's a better, it's a better plan for everyone, probably, but we need to explore it and find that out. So again, I'm a little concerned about locking into a three-to-five-year commitment on this, knowing there's something else we've not really taken a look at. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I'd like to not, I would hope that we could take number nine separately from the rest, because I would like to delay number nine if possible. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Could we go back to item number three? Commissioner Dennis made a pretty strong claim, and I just wonder what the validity to that is, or if we can discuss that in a way that is productive?
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve all the consent items, with the exception of number three and number nine.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Let's pull up number three. Item number three.
I'm going to introduce our benefits consultant with IMA, Matt Cohen, to speak about the industry standard with the decrease in coverage with age.
AJ, good to see you, and congratulations. Look forward to the repairs. Okay.
Good morning. As Sheena said, I'm Matt Cohen with IMA. We are consultant for the county on the, specifically the employee benefits programs. Happy to talk about the life insurance. I definitely understand the concern with the, the age reduction of a benefit. That is, that is something that is an industry standard. Unfortunately, is how most of the companies that offer that benefit, how they do offer that in their policies. Typically, that's on a group basis, that's standard. It's also typically the same way as if you would get an individual policy yourself. That being said, that's, that's how they underwrite their policies. I agree, that's a disadvantage for older, older folks. And typically, that's when they need that benefit more. If you look at it actuarially, that's, those are the individuals that pass away as you get older. That's one of the reasons that they underwrite it that way, is because it's potential cost and liability for the carriers that are underwriting that risk. So that's, again, that's the industry standard on that, but happy to take any questions specifically about that, or discuss it a little further.
Okay, so I'm not finished.
Oh, sure.
So, so what you're saying is, that's part of our, I guess I just don't want it to be assumed that, like, Sheena is discriminating, or anything of that nature. Like, this is just how it has been. If there was going to be a change in regards to how this is structured, where would that change need to come from?
That would have to be an industry change.
Okay.
So the, the carriers, the ones that actually provide the policy, and how they underwrite that liability for them, would have to change that. That's not a, specific to Sedgwick County. That is across the policies that they provide in the, the private sector as well. So it's not a specific provision to the county. That's just how they, their policies in general are written.
So we are operating under the way that it has been for a while, and this wasn't a decision made by Sedgwick County. It was made by its industry standard, and that's just kind of the way it is unless they change it.
Correct. Yeah, that's, that's not a decision by the county at all.
Okay.
That's, that's a decision by the insurance carriers that provide the policy.
Okay. I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Well, I guess I'd strongly disagree that it's a decision by the industry instead of by Sedgwick County, because we have the ability to take a look at who our aged employees are, and we can insure them any way we want. So I think you're passing the buck, honestly. A couple of years ago, I asked how many were affected by this, and it was a very small number. But that small number are still individuals that need the job, or they wouldn't continue to be working. And if they pass away, their next of kin need the funding. So what, first, let me ask you, how many of our employees are under the reduced insurance as a result of this, if we pass it?
I don't have the exact number.
But I asked that a couple of years ago, and I still can't get a good answer. I was told it was a handful. And, and you come up and tell me that it's industry standard. But I think you're passing the buck. You don't want to answer my questions.
We'll get the numbers of how many people are under the reduced benefit.
Okay. The second thing is, what does it cost to insure that handful of people? What is, what is that answer?
We don't have that answer today. We could.
But I've asked it over and over again. You know that I've asked it. So why am I still asking it today?
We'll get your answers. We'll look into that.
Thank you.
And Mr. Papoon, you mentioned something?
Well, I just wanted to ask Commissioner Dennis's age discrimination point. As I understand our, and I reiterate what he said in terms of life insurance by its very nature is discriminatory. I mean, the older you are, the more you pay. Anybody that's ever tried to get life insurance understands that. It discriminates against people with disabilities, or long-term cancer and things like that. You can't walk in with terminal cancer and get a, get a life insurance policy for very cheap. Obviously, you'd be paying extreme amount of money. But as I understand, our system anyway, it's based on salary. It's not based on age. If we were, if we were developing a system that said, anybody 60 years and over, we're not going to insure you, and adding what it's based on, it's based on salary. And that salary can affect younger people, older people. So that's a completely non-discriminatory form of doing it, unless you're going to argue that older people are somewhat generally impacted because of the upper salary limits. And that probably doesn't make any sense, because our older workers probably are making more money than our younger workers in general, because they've been around longer. So I, I really don't think that the county, just from a legal standpoint, has any problem with age discrimination if we adopt this, this plan today.
But Mr. Papoon, Sheena just said that it is based on age also.
What I'm understanding, and Sheena can explain.
Maybe I can clarify real quick.
Okay.
So your amount of life insurance coverage is based on your salary level. So if that's 25, or I'm sorry, 20,000, 25,000, that's based on salary. The reduction of benefits begins starting at age 70. There is a percentage of that amount that is reduced.
So I'm saying it is based on age. We do reduce the benefits based on age, and that's what I've been complaining about for three years.
Commissioner Cruz?
I, I see Tim wants to say something. Did you have something to add?
I just wanted to clarify that we're talking about a voluntary benefit. Isn't that correct?
So a portion of it is, is paid by the county, a portion of it is additional cost to employees if they want to add additional coverage.
But I'm not talking about the additional coverage. I'm talking about what we pay for, for our employees. What you're doing is age discrimination. The more senior the employee is, the less that they're going to get in life insurance benefits based on what this proposal is. And I've asked us to review that, to find out how many are, are in this category, and to find out what it would cost to continue their benefits. They're the ones that need it the most, or they wouldn't continue to work. And if you think that I'm trying to do it for myself because I'm in this age group, I will remove myself from any life insurance policy from Sedgwick County, if that satisfies anyone. It is not personal. It is, I am trying to do this for our senior members that are working still. They are having to have a job. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. Commissioner Dennis, I see where you're coming from, and I get that. I think that our language, though, that when we're speaking to our staff is really important, because you say you're doing it. It's the, it's the constraints in which you're operating under for your carrier. Is that correct? This, this is, this is what, so what would be other options? Are there other options out there that do not reduce benefits because of age? Are there any other options that you could bring back to us in addition to the requested information that Commissioner Dennis has asked for? Is that something you could bring back to us?
So in, in general, I totally understand, you know, where you're coming from on that. This is, the limit to what getting coverage for those is based off of some insurance carrier providing that coverage, right? They, they essentially write those policies to go out and find additional coverage, as was mentioned before. They, there is inherently age discrimination in there, or disability discrimination, or having those things. The nature of insurance is they, they, they're, they're defining what the risk is. And so they're building these provisions to their contracts to limit their risk and liability. So to go out and say, hey, we, we, we want this coverage, because it makes sense to me as well, because those are the people that need it the most, you are limited by what an insurance policy would cover on that. And within the industry, that's something that they don't, they don't cover. Or they have that reduction based off of, so you're limited to what insurance carriers will provide. So that, so that's where we are with that. I totally understand the limits and the, where you're coming from, and I agree. But we're also limited by what you can buy as a policy, and what those provisions within those policies are. are.
So to reiterate what the commission is asking for, Commissioner Dennis, specific questions, help me understand if I get this wrong. How many people are affected? How much does it cost if we were to eliminate the age limit? And then what are other options that don't, I guess those are kind of similar in nature, but what the other options are, if there are any? Is that right? Is that correct?
What I want to know is, I can go out and buy insurance today, and it doesn't matter on my age, I just pay more. So I don't know why we can't continue it for those that are in that category. It's going to cost us more. I understand that, and that's why I ask, is how much more it would cost.
So would that be... We'll ask those questions. What do you think an appropriate timeframe would be for you to get that and bring it back to us? How long will it take you to get that info? A week.
Yeah, I think we can have it prepared for the November 3 meeting.
Okay. Does that work?
Oh, that's fine.
Okay, great. Thank you both.
And open enrollment starts November 1?
October 28 is when open enrollment starts.
Okay, so the employees can enroll in anything except this item three?
That would be correct.
That'd be okay, you think?
We're going to have to go back and... We'll figure out a solution. I don't know what that solution is right now.
Okay, so this delay will satisfy two commissioners to delay it. But the 3,000 employees that want to make their decisions on October 28 going forward, you feel comfortable that the employees will be messaged in a respectful way that we're delaying this part of the enrollment to satisfy the commissioners?
That is not how we have open enrollment set up technically for people to do that. That's my concern, where I don't have an answer how we would do that.
I agree.
I'd like to make a statement.
That's fine, go ahead.
You say two, I'm trying to offer clarifying solutions. I am actually in support of this today, but I want to make sure that we are respectful of our staff and how they operate. So that is why I'm trying to offer a solution around... So I am supportive of this today.
Okay.
I'll make that clear. Thank you.
So is there a motion and/or a second? I can't remember. Is there a motion and a second to delay this? There isn't an official motion to delay this till November 3? Is there one? And is there a second? Commissioner Dennis?
I really want the answer, so let me ask you a question. If we pass this today, you come up, can you amend this and have us come back to us at a later date, say, November 3 or at some point like that, to add this additional benefit to ensure that we don't have age discrimination?
I'm going to look to the experts on the amendment of things.
So I will defer a little bit to procurement rules, but as far as a contract with the insurance carrier itself, yes, you can, if we need to make an amendment, we can do that. Joe has any comment about procurement or any of those purchasing items, but from an insurance contract standpoint, yes, we can make those changes if they're available.
Hey, this is what I've been asking for for three years, is for us to look at what's happening with our seniors, and I have no problem with passing it today as long as we answer my questions that I've got. And then the commissioners can decide if the extra cost for those few people is worth it. And that's the questions I don't have right now. So again, I don't have a problem with passing item three at this point in time, as long as you'll come back to me and give answers to all five commissioners. Thank you.
Motion to approve item number three.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve consent item number three. Commissioner Howell, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chairman.
I apologize.
Yes, bid board item number three, but I do have a question, so reading this as closely as I can. Do we have a clear description of what the, how the benefits change over the age versus benefits? Is there a chart somewhere that I can look at that shows that?
Yeah, I can send you some information.
I think that information will be very helpful.
We changed our chart this year, so I'll send you the updated information.
Okay, so while this discussion's going on, I think we need to have that data. I would actually, I actually may not want to see us vote on this today, I'll tell you why. I happen to notice on the chart for the bid board, the bid board is recommending this choice, but one of the other choices that we're not picking today actually clarifies that there's no age reduction. It may not be, this may not be the best deal. If you're going to rebid this, if you're going to come back with a potential amendment, it might change the numbers. They would make this, there's no age reduction, it may not be the best deal. We need to know that before we vote. So I don't know, it seems to me like we shouldn't be passing something when we're not sure if it's the best deal and if the numbers are going to change. When we see there's competition to this item, it actually does what we want it to do. So, and that chart would be part of this discussion, I need to see that, and I think this needs to, we need to get that detail from this provider, and then maybe recompare this again, and possibly go back to bid board a second time. I think I have to vote no on this today. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yeah, that was going to be my point as a point of order. There's a motion and a second on the floor, so...
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor to adopt consent item number three. Any other comments? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, now item number nine. Sheena, if we go, I'll just ask a quick question. If we go into analysis of PTO and all of that that was discussed a few minutes ago and presented by Commissioner Howell, it's a lot to grasp for me. What would entail, I'm trying to say and ask at the same time. Would this not be an environment where you and the management could get together and start looking at the impact on the 42-plus departments and managers, and if it is as clear as Commissioner Howell has presented, what would be, what's a timeframe? And even, could it be implemented if there was such a change? If the management would be in favor of that, employees? Could you respond to that a little bit?
If we were directed to look into that, I absolutely think that the manager would direct a committee to come together to look at all aspects of that. I think there's a lot of people that need to be at the table to look at any type of situation, because I think there could be huge financial impacts in regards to making a transition into that. I've also talked with IMA, and we are willing to talk with the provider to see what an employer-based short-term plan policy would look like, as opposed to having individuals buy the short-term disability plan. But I think realistically, it's going to take a considerable amount of time to do that, to look into that and have a full analysis back to the commission.
So meaning months and months, or an implementation could be a year or two?
I think that's realistic.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Hi, Joe.
How you doing, sir? Joe Thomas again. For procurement purposes, what we could do is go ahead and recommend and approve to meet the date for the employees to implement and come back after a year, six months, and we could break the contract. We do have agreements, terminate contracts for cause or convenience, and that might also be a negotiating tool to the carrier we award to cooperate and negotiate with us.
Okay.
Chairman, commissioners, because of the budget implications, it probably makes sense that we do this as part of the next budget cycle.
Budget process.
And extensive review and analysis, and bring that to you as part of the budget package.
Okay. Well, with that clarification, and I understand, Commissioner Howell, you explained this to me as well earlier this week, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve item, what is it?
Nine.
Nine, with this agreement that we will be looking at this during the budget process coming into the next year.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I actually would have seconded that, but that's fine that someone else did. Let me just say, every once in a while, and I appreciate Commissioner Dennis this morning, he raised an issue before, and for some reason, the item kind of got put on the back burner. I don't know why that happened, and again, every once in a while, that does happen, and it's hard for us to keep things alive, but this is one of those issues where I have raised this issue, I would say probably half dozen times, and I've raised it at numerous retreats. I think all the commissioners have heard me talk about this at the retreat, the financial retreat, that precedes most of the budget work that we do ask commissioner work, but I would just say, I will support this, but I implore us to go find out the details. Maybe this is a bad idea, but maybe it's a great idea. We need to go find out, because if it saves taxpayer money, makes us more competitive, makes our employees happier, it's a win-win-win. We don't know until we find out. So let's not let it die. Let's go find out the information. Maybe it's great, again, if it's a great idea, we just need to find that out. And as long as we have options to make this change if and when that day comes, I think that's fine. So I think we can go ahead and lean forward today, just so that we can get these benefits options out in front of the employees. I know they have to do their selections quick, you know, pretty soon here, but I do think this is such an important topic. I want to do everything I can to be competitive with the private sector, to make our employees happy, and to help the managers manage their staff. These are the things that, this potentially has a huge impact on a lot of great things. So let's not let it be forgotten. Again, I'm a little bit exasperated, because I feel like I've brought this up at least a half dozen times, and I just feel like I can't get the conversation moving forward, kind of like Commissioner Dennis. And so I will support the motion, but let's please make this investigation, at least a cursory investigation, to find out whether something we need to really do a deep dive on. I appreciate the time. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I don't see other comments. There's a motion and a second to approve this item on the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay, is that, okay, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Commissioner Tim Coffin. If the county manager recommends approval of items C and D...
Any questions on consent agenda? Commissioner Dennis?
Well, thank you. I see that item C amends District 1 to allow people that have businesses in District 1, which is not a bad idea. So I don't know why we're not looking at this for more than one district. We're going to pass it today for one district, but until it showed up on the agenda, I wasn't aware that this was something that we were even thinking about, and it hadn't crossed my mind, but it's not a bad idea. What's it take to amend this to add District 3 to it at this time, or do we have to go through this whole thing again?
Mike, this was brought to the attention on my advisory board, that it was brought up, and they feel that, they felt that if a business owner was in the district and spent most of their time and had most of their influence within the district, that that should be... I had assumed it was okay. That is the way across the street at the advisory board, so then I was told that I couldn't do it without having this changed. So I would agree, I think you all ought to have had the option if you've got a business owner. Now, this did not mean just manage. It was clear not to be managing, and then you couldn't say, I manage 12 people at Spirit, so I should be on the District 5 advisory board. It's business ownership, basically, is what it's spelled out. So that's the background. I don't know if we can amend it to say...
No. I think, Mr. Chairman, of course, this came up because one of your members that had previously been appointed, we found out on a business in your district and didn't actually reside, so we have had to change the resolution. To do this for other commissioners, and each commissioner can set their own ground rules on their citizens advisory board. If Commissioner Dennis wants this, we'll have it prepared for the next meeting and have similar language for you, but we would have to do this for each of you that has a resolution creating a citizens advisory board.
So I can't just amend this one and add District 3 to it also?
Why don't we bring it back on the third floor?
No problem.
Thanks for clarifying, Mike. And thank you, Commissioner Dennis, for pointing that out. I don't see any other comments, unless there is one. I don't see any, so we have a motion and a second for consent item C and D. You did have them second?
Right.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive session.
Yes, Commissioner Cruz?
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 60 minutes until 11:45 for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property for the purpose of potentially relocating county departments, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 11:45.
A second. Any questions? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay, we will adjourn to the, we're going to go to the boardroom, so we will be back here at 11:45. So we will be back here at 11:45.
I think we're ready.
Okay, we are back live?
We are back live, you can hear me okay? Okay, thank you. Thank you everybody for being patient. We've returned from executive session and no action taken, no formal actions proposed. So with that, we will adjourn unless there's any comments from the commissioners, any updates at this point? Okay, so we will adjourn today's meeting and we'll see you again in the near future. So with that, we will adjourn unless there's any comments from the commissioners, any updates at this point. Okay? So we will adjourn today's meeting and we'll see you again in the near future.